It is 2:31. All of the members of the commission are present. We have a new member here, and she wears many hats. And this time, she's Acting Service Safety Director, Beverly Henry. If you plan to say anything, we take sworn statements. Would you please stand up and raise your right hand? You swear that anything you say will be the truth? You affirm that this will be the truth? If you want to speak, we have to have you do this. I'm not going to speak. Because I'll have to... You don't have to speak, but in the case you might want to speak. All right? You swear I affirm that what you say will be the truth? Just stand up and do it. Okay? All right. Fine. If you didn't do that, you don't get to speak. All right. Now, try. This is not part of this. Wait, I'm sitting on my microphone. It's wrapped around the thing, and it's going to choke me. Okay. We have one case scheduled, which is number 0411, National Church Residences, Patrick Higgins. And it's a request for an extension of the start date for construction. We had a letter last month, and then we were asked to put this on the Planning Commission because the National Church Residence feels that the time is going to run out the end of December. And with the number of cases and things and discussions, they are requesting an extension on this PUD. Does anybody... Did you want to speak to that? Let me go up there and identify yourself, please.
Jerry Koyath, Vice President, Operations of National Church Residences, Healthcare. Ladies and gentlemen of the Athens Planning Commission, National Church Residences is requesting an extension of the two-year and five-year construction time limits for a planned unit development approved in December 29, 2005, Ordinance Number 012005. Athens City Code 210926 provides for an extension of the time limit by the Planning Commission. We believe an extension of the deadline is warranted as a result of ongoing and continuous litigation resulting in an inability to secure financing or the necessary building permits to begin construction. Extension of the construction deadline would follow well-established Ohio case law, which comports with the opinion of the Athens City Attorney. As litigation ended on November 2 of this year, we believe that the construction deadline should be deemed to have been told through that date. Accordingly, we respectfully request that the commission determine that the two-year and five-year construction time limits for the PUD ordinance will not expire until November 2, 2009, and November 2 of 2012. Three other quick updates. We talked about this at the last meeting, actually four things. We are continuing to work with the university on the terms of the lease. We expect to have those things worked out within the next 60 days. Despite the fact that a number of additional projects have broken ground in the community, an affordable housing project, as well as a new nursing facility with assisted living, that the 23 pre-lease applications that we have received demonstrates continued support for the project. Third, we are continuing to work with the 18 conditions that City Council set, as well as the fact that we have had six advisory council meetings to prepare for the construction of the project. And it would be National Church Residences' intent to break ground immediately once the lease is signed with the university and we can secure the necessary building permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions? I have... Let's see, who else here? Jean Wells, you started your name, that you wish to speak.
Yes.
All right. All right. Now, let's see. Elaine Getz, is that how it's pronounced?
Yes.
Did you... You gave us a letter. Did you want to...
Um, all right.
Well, you have to go up there and identify yourself.
Right. Absolutely. My name is Elaine Getz, and I live at 106 Maplewood Drive. And I read in the newspaper that the Planning Commission should only grant an extension of approval for this project if it was not in conflict with public interest to approve this. And I believe that it is in conflict of public interest to approve this. I feel bad saying this, but I really don't think it's even in public interest of the seniors who are in favor of this project. It is a very risky site to be developing a retirement center on. In fact, it is in opposition to both federal and state regulations to develop a critical facility such as this on a flood plain, even a 500-year flood plain, which has a 0.2 percent chance of flooding each year. This site is probably a 20-year flood plain. It has probably a 5 percent chance each year of flooding. And I do understand that the building will be elevated, but the site itself will be surrounded by water. There is also a chance that, due to the construction of this building, this site, that there will be displacement of water into our neighborhoods, and our homes could be at additional risk because of it. And I do believe that this is not something that is... That the majority of our community is in favor of. So I would like you to consider those issues when you vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any question? Patricia Stokes?
I'm Patricia Stokes. I live at 67 Morris. And I'd like to just add on a little bit to what Elaine said. Elaine spoke to the potential negatives, and I think all of us in this room are aware that when you're proposing a public project or a project that has a public impact, you're looking at balancing risks and benefits. Elaine spoke to the risks. I would just like to add to that quite briefly, that I think the benefits, the purported benefit, the intended benefit, that was always there from the start of the project, and that I, for one, felt was the most compelling argument in favor of it, would be that it was going to be a continuing care facility. And because of already existing facilities and legal restrictions on what NCR was unable to build, they had to scale back on those original plans. And as a result of that, the project is not able to offer what people had originally hoped to. At the same time, there are these other two projects being built. And that would seem to tip the balance, I think, quite considerably away from there being such a compelling need for it in the community. So with that in mind, and set against the impacts on the neighborhood, on flooding dangers, and I'm not talking now about green space or quality of life, I'm talking really more about these more profound public safety implications that Elaine addressed, I would just like to ask the commission to reconsider some of the arguments and to think about how these things may have, in fact, rebalanced, maybe tipped in a different direction than when you first voted on it. Thanks so much for your attention.
Thank you. Jack Ellis?
My name is Jack Ellis. I live in Mulligan Road in Athens. Have lived here for 40 years. My name is pretty far down the list. I didn't realize I was going to be speaking so soon.
Nobody else put those...
I apologize for extemporaneous comments that I will make. I didn't dress appropriately just for this meeting. I just came from a diagnostics hybrid board meeting. And I think most of you know that it's been a real effort to keep that organization here in town, provides a lot of opportunities for employees and for growth for the future. Appearing before this board to take a phrase from Casey Stengel, it seemed like deja vu all over again. I've been involved directly or indirectly on three different occasions over the last 20 years in trying to bring a retirement community to Athens, Ohio. The first one was started by a group of people from the Methodist Church, and it failed. The second effort around, I was very directly involved with it, and we were not able to end up and bring something to Athens, but we did end up bringing a condominium complex in Lindley Hall to the Plains, not in Athens, but to the Plains. It's been very successful. The condos are sold out. There's a waiting list for Lindley Inn. The current owner of that organization has filed a lawsuit in the past, and I understand that it's been withdrawn, but may file again. I don't understand the rationale behind that, because that unit is sold out, and as I say, there's a waiting list for Lindley Inn for people to get in, which indicates there is a need. With respect to the other two facilities that referred to, those are not really competitive with what NCR is attempting to do. This is a unit that will provide for retirement opportunities, but does provide for assisted living, and I guess maybe some nursing care, too. But it's providing an opportunity for people who want a little higher, maybe, standard of living, if you will, for the retirement years than what's currently available in Athens. To take another analogy, the baseball analogy, I thought the last time we appeared here that we hit a home run and we were ready to move ahead. There have been a lot of things happen that has... Barriers have been put up, roadblocks have been put up. I congratulate NCR for having the patience to stay with this as long as they have, despite the roadblocks. We thought we had a home run. It turned out to be a ground rule double. We have a way to go yet to finally make this come home, and I strongly encourage the Planning Commission to grant this extension. Thank you.
Lorraine, you didn't say you wanted to speak, but you signed. Did you want to?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Lorraine McCosker. I live at 59 Elmwood Place in Athens. And I think I've been attending meetings regarding this issue for as long as I've been in Athens or whenever it began. Primarily, I oppose it on three basic premises. One is that I believe that this is the improper place for this structure. The city has recently interned Elaine Getz. She has provided information about our floodway and our flood issues, and I think that that is a really critical issue right now when we're facing growth, we're facing blasting of hilltops, and we're facing global warming issues. So I really oppose this site for this specific retirement center or CCR. I've also been attending the meetings with Jerry Koyath for the past year, and I've seen the project change a lot. And it's very different than what was presented to the folks who were really desiring this project. I think it's been scaled down a lot. And I don't know if that's really the project that these individuals had hoped for, but also that there are no nursing beds. I also oppose it on the fact that I think we should maintain this space as a green space. There's been much, much research on the importance of green space for health, for mental health. And I do believe that this is an area that is keenly needed in our city. And I lastly oppose this as a democratic issue. We saw that two years ago, this was pushed forth on December 29 and voted on by three council members and approved. This is at a time when many people were out of town, those individuals, many individuals couldn't vote because of their relationship to the university. And now I see this happening again. We have a mayor leaving, and he is pushing this permit through to the Planning Commission at his last venue. So I think I really don't think that this is a democratic experience, and I therefore oppose it.
Thank you. Those are the only people I had who did, except Jean Wells. Do you want to now do your thing?
Whoops. It might get over the shirt. [laughter]
Hi. I'm Jean Wells, and I live on Forest Street and look down at the things we're talking There are many, many people, I think if you put it to a vote, who are interested in this project. I am interested in it because it has changed a little, but we've known all along how the changes were happening. And we're still just as interested in living someplace where we have a flat place to walk, where we can get to the library, where we would have a place nearby to put up our guests who are coming, and where we could have our husband with us, if he manages to hang on so long, and perhaps even our small pet, which we couldn't do in any of the other places. And also, as I said the last time I taught, I have had people in one of the church service communities, and they're beautifully run, and they take good care of you. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who didn't check off that they wanted to speak, who wishes to speak? You didn't sign in, did you want...
[inaudible]
Well, you haven't signed in. You have to sign... Well, do you want to speak? You didn't mark the thing, but if you want to speak, go ahead. That's why I swore in, because people... You were supposed to check your name that you wanted to speak. So you can go ahead. That's why I wanted to do that.
I'm Margaret Topping. I live on Longview Heights. And I've been involved with this now for... Since the year I retired, so it's going on six years. I swore I wouldn't fully retire until I was sure that we... Since I had been at other committees, and we tried, this community had tried five times since the early '70s, maybe six, depending on how you count it, to do a retirement community for people who don't qualify for affordable housing, in the sense of the new construction, which is wonderful. We're delighted to have it. We don't think that we are nursing bed patients, and we just want independent living. There is not much available in this community. In that way, even condominiums are very, very few. And I can tell you, after almost a year now of taking care of a husband on a feeding tube, that it is very difficult to live in a house where you're trying to maintain the house, maintain the yard, and take care of someone without any supervision at all, which we would have in a facility like this. Plus, we would have additional help for meals and things of that sort. We want to be part of the community. We don't want to leave Athens. And there are many, many of us. I think the last count on that last referendum was about 700 people. We didn't even keep trying because we thought that was plenty. As far as the flooding goes, I can't be an authority, but we've lived here since 1969, and I would really be glad to know if you could prove to me that there was water on our part of the site since 1969. I have never, ever been aware of it. It has come up over the bike path, but that isn't part of our site. That will remain just as it is unless the city would make a change. Just to reiterate, the project hasn't changed, except that there are no Medicaid/Medicare beds, which we had hoped to have a few, and still would hope sometime to have a few. That means that everything can be taken care of as far as just, you know, there's home nursing available, there's... Everything else will be available. But if you had a situation where you ran out of Medicare and you had no more means, there is not the Medicare/Medicaid beds for you. I could see a situation with, you know, a burn unit or a long-term stroke. So none of us are very worried about that. There will be rehab facilities, there will be all the other things that we would need. Also, I think it is of interest to the community, and we went through all this, as several other people said, we went all through this all of the year of 2005. And it would... I agree with Elaine that there needs to be more regulation on flood plain things, but we permitted, what is it, almost 300 beds over there on Columbus Road that are nursing beds. They have the same problem, if not more so. Richland Avenue, McDonald's just built a new building. They weren't required to do anything different. And we will be up seven feet. And as I told Paul not long ago, every facility in this town, including the hospital, you know, just rattle off everybody you can think of that goes along that health border over there, they all have to have evacuation plans. The city should be approving them. And that is something that isn't a responsibility of the city, other than to integrate them and be satisfied with them. If they're not satisfactory, then you've got to work with those entities or pass other legislation. But that will be done. It is always done in a health facility or a health-related facility. So I would just like to make a plea that we very much would like to see this happen. We are losing people every week from this community that have been long-term citizens. They're still very active. It is a huge resource loss to the city. I think it far outweighs anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Jean Amaral, 187 North Congress Street. I'm sorry I was late. I hope I'm maybe repeating what other people have said. I don't mean to. I want to start out by saying I think that this kind of project is absolutely essential for a community like Athens. I'm not opposed to housing for seniors. I've gone through the experience with my own parents, dealing with these kinds of things. It's very traumatic, and it can be very difficult. I appreciate that. I just think this is the wrong place. And I've been open before City Council about this. I think it's the wrong place for the environment, all the environmental reasons that have been enumerated. I think it's unsafe. My understanding from people who know a lot more about it than I do is that in the worst-case scenario, access to Athens itself will be cut off, and that we have already wrongly permitted medical facilities in the flood area along the river. I don't think we should add to it. Just because we've made one mistake doesn't mean we should make more mistakes. We should stop and say, whoops, we've gone too far. Time to back off. If there was... The kind of flooding that we could get, and I think is likely to happen, given the way that what we're seeing around the world and even our own country, I think we're going to... There'll be time not too far in the future where people will really regret having developed that piece all along the river, including the university. And there's going to be a lot of people are going to be very badly hurt by it. And I think that's something that we see over and over again, communities saying, oh my goodness, we shouldn't have done that. Now what are we going to do? People are going to claim liability. They're going to want to rebuild someplace else. Why don't we be proactive and start doing things differently here and not wait till after the cow is out of the barn? And again, I'm perfectly willing to work with people who want to find an alternative. Unfortunately, this has been a very divisive issue. People haven't been working together. They've been working apart, which is very unfortunate. I don't mean to be obstructionist at all. Want to see something like this happen, but not there. I'm also very concerned over the fact that the university is only charging a dollar per year or some reduced rate. I think it's... If it's not illegal, it's unethical for the university to be giving favors to one project over another by reducing... Particularly at a time when the university itself is in such financial difficulties. I think it's just amazing to me. I'm incredulous that the university would proceed in this manner. I'm an employee of the university, and it really bothers me that these people are doing this to us, to our university. So I just would like to wrap up with that. Again, I think we need a project like this. We need many more projects like this. We need projects that... I would prefer projects that do guarantee full range of care, because there are certain circumstances where people are kicked out, are not allowed to go into nursing facilities when they are on Medicare because they haven't been in the facility prior to going on Medicare. That was the case of my parents. And I feel like those issues need to be addressed in any kind of a comprehensive plan for working with elders in our community. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? We had two letters which we received in the mail from Christine Fall, is that Fall and her husband, on Glen Matlack on Morris Avenue. And they, of course, have been opposed to it all along, but we will put that in the record. Then Doug Getz, and then your letter, too. You have that... I think that other letter that she wrote is down here someplace. We'll put that in there. Well, it's down here someplace. And then we had one here also in opposition from John, Deborah, Sam, and Jacob Bootenpans. Is that right? How you pronounce it? In here.
No, this is the Matlack.
Well, I think I passed it down. It's here, anyway. We've got something. Those were in there. I would like to point out, in one of those letters, the reference was to buildings on Columbus Avenue. It's Columbus Road, and I don't like things to be wrong. And also, one other thing I wanted to mention, and I wanted to... I should have mentioned this at the beginning, about a complaint about this board meeting in the daytime because we're all retired, and so we don't really care. They may be retired, but we three are not retired. I go to work every day. And so people should be very careful about statements they make. I may be old, but I still go out and work. And Harry, I think you were doing early retirement and teaching for quite a long time, too. You're the only one that's not doing anything, just walling around there doing nothing. So I have to have from this board, if no one else wants to say anything. I have to have... Well, you have recused yourself.
Yes. I would like to explain that I'm abstaining from discussion or voting. At the time that this first went through the Planning Commission and through the City Council, I had no personal interest in it. After it went through City Council and I heard mainly the opposition, my husband and I began thinking we really should begin looking for retirement housing. And so we're on the list with NCR. And so I am not taking part in this discussion.
Okay. All right. So the rest of you.
Okay. Well, I think, Madam Chairman, that the issue before, as I said, most of the speakers are talking about want to bring up what's been brought up for three years ago to us. What the important part is, is that our responsibility is to enforce the code of the city and the state of Ohio and everything else. And what clearly is in the packet of information from the National Church Residencies is citations of court litigation that has happened to other cities that basically say that once it is adopted and passed, that if you use a time limit that has been imposed because of limitations, it's illegal to do. And so the developer has requested the time limit as to the length of time that it has been... been litigation, which is one year, 200 and some days at this stage. And I think, based upon what our law director has stated, as looking over from their attorneys, we're just backing the court again, and that's, you know, we're backing the tearing the community apart again, too. And I don't think that's very healthy for us. So I would make a motion to extend their time limits for the two-year limit to November 2nd, 2009, and the five-year construction time limit to November 2nd, 2012.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
If the litigation had not occurred, where would the project be at this time?
If litigation hadn't occurred, the project would be complete.
Okay. And at the time it came before the planning commission originally, how much objection was raised by the citizens during the course of those meetings?
A lot, same as, about the same people who are speaking, some of the same people.
Was there a lot of positive feedback also?
Yes, same. Well, we had that one meeting, I think we had that at the community center, didn't we? Yeah, and I think there were a lot of familiar faces here, plus others. But it was, it's, I mean, there are the ones for it, and the ones against it, and they haven't budged, as I can see. And so I don't know. And as Rick says, I think our, this question here today is, in all fairness, because of all these court cases, which, if my understanding is correct, some of those cases, some assistance was given to the people who brought the cases from some of the other companies that were involved, is that not correct? I think that's public record, that they were, that that was helped from another company feeling that this was, this was in competition with them. I don't have those actual facts here, but I believe that's what the understanding is. And in all fairness, I don't see that national church residencies should have to suffer because of some court cases that were brought, where, you know, they went into this in good faith, and we all went into this in good faith, and they should have the chance to continue by, as the law states. That's where we are. So any other questions? Are you ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I abstain.
She abstains, so there's four, so you have to have, I mean, it's, four votes is fine. So that's, we have granted that request. Okay. Our next section here, we have no more cases, communications, now, the only communications I had previously were the ones I read, and the ones you gave us, which are into the record, and the information which we have that goes with the case. Do we have any announcements or other business? We have a, our next meeting is scheduled for?
December 20th.
December 20th, okay. And of course, if we have cases, and we will have, we'll have a meeting, but I don't know if we will. Lots of people disappear. Now, there's a chance here, the next thing is the opportunity for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda. Is there a citizen who wishes to speak about anything?
I'm Lorraine McCosker, and I just received an email that, for a while, we've been talking about the summit at Coats Run, and the question of whether it was a PUD, whether it qualifies as a PUD, and we had a safety service director that was very intricately going through that, and looking at all the issues. So today I did receive an email that the permit to blast the site and remove the hilltop 30 feet has been signed by Mayor Abel.
Where do these rumors start?
Are you saying it's not, it's not true?
I met with the developer at 10 o'clock this morning, about 10:15, and he talked to me about doing blasting. And he asked what the process was for permit. I said I'd get back to him after I talked to the law director. I don't know where these things come from.
I think that we do have other issues on that hilltop. We have archaeological remains. There's a request or need for a 401 or a 404 permit, because of the impacts to stream.
He asked to do all those things.
And before they blast?
The court has also ruled that so far, the city's permissive issues have been valid.
Well, I think it's up to interpretation, right? Whether it's a PUD or not?
I think you can read Judge Ward's ruling in the case file. We're just following the law. I mean, that's what we have to do, we can't make it up.
Okay, well, I just wanted to express that concern, and I think it's a concern for a lot of us in the community, that that hilltop is going to be removed. And I think the law is interpreted in different ways.
Well, I can show you the court cases, and the law director's decision of August 6th of this year, citing the court cases, it says it's illegal for a city to have an ordinance that would preclude blasting within its corporate limits. It's a state law that says you can do blasting, and it spells out within the state law how to obtain those permits.
I've seen that law.
Yeah.
But the PUD is of question, whether it's?
But look at Judge Ward's decision when he ruled that the city, they followed the proper procedure.
So I think that that's something that I'm very concerned with, and many of us in our community are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything they want to speak about, not covered on the agenda? Okay. We don't have any minutes, do we? No. One minute. Okay. Steve, you sure you don't have anything you want to give us?
Not just now.
She knows it. All right.
It's the only thing I can do to this.
So it's 3:08, I'll have to go back to work, you know, even though I am retired. We are adjourned at 3:08.